Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regular Board of Commissioners meeting for today, April tenth, twenty twenty five. I'll be calling this meeting to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the State Flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The State of Mexico, the US of America, and our friendship among my own cultural
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda. So have a motion by Commissioner Medina, have a second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. The request forms are in our county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? You go up there, just state your name and get going.
So my name is Steve Mitchell, and I live in Buckhorn. There we go. Hi, my name is Steve Mitchell, and I live in Buckhorn, New Mexico. Few years back, when Raul was running for sheriff, he sat down with me and shared his vision for our community out there. And he's kept that promise that he gave me. He went and found and recruited a deputy. You've heard his name, I'm sure, before, Don Gatlin. And he's done an outstanding job in our community. He's lives in the community. He grew up in the community. He graduated from the school, from Cliff School, and he's doing an outstanding job and has the support of the vast majority of the people within our community. But one of the problems that I have is recently one of the commissioners went to our sheriff and wanted to restrict Donnie's patrol area and some other things. And we need to stop that. Donnie's doing a great job. He patrols an area that's probably larger than any other deputy in the county, from the state line over up by Mule Creek, up to the county line, all the way up to almost the truck bypass. If you really want to support our sheriff, and I think he's doing a great job, and you really want to support the deputy that's in our area, you know, you've spent money to put up towers. Let's spend some money on law enforcement. Let's try to, I'm sure there's another deputy in our area that he could recruit so that we have two deputies in our area. I sat here and remember hearing one of the council members talk about, not once, but twice, he got a ticket for speeding through that community. And he was almost happy about it, the way he expressed it. Okay? Donnie, he exemplifies the spirit of the law. Not everybody gets a ticket. And we need to continue to support him. The community supports him. When I shared that I was coming to this meeting, I had a lot of people ask me, hey, do you want to put together a petition? And we'll help get names. And I said, no, I don't think it's needed. So please, please, support our sheriff and support the law enforcement that we have in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Yes, sir.
My name is Raul Salsito. I own a couple of pieces of property down in North Hurley. We've got a project going on down there. And there's a wall that they built, like a retaining wall, and they backfilled it towards the road. So the wall is like five feet, and the elevation of the road, another two feet, so it's about seven foot. So anyway, the name of the turn is called Dead Man's Curve. And now with the project that we're doing, we got like a seven-foot drop from the top of the road to my property. And I've been trying to get ahold of Eloy, Mr. Medina, to, so he could go see it. But I've already approached the project manager, Jason Lockett, and Joseph Hoguee, to see if we can, you know, it's looking good, we're doing a good job down there, if we can put a guardrail on that corner, is what I would like. You know, before I wasn't too worried about because there was trees and brush and everything that was gonna slow down whoever didn't make the turn. But now we've got like a nice turn where people can fly a little bit. So I think we need to look at that. You know, I haven't been able to get any kind of an answer or get anybody to go see it to make some kind of a judgment and let me know why we can't do a guardrail there. And that's all I got. I just need you guys, I need somebody to go look at it, please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
I ran out of ink. I just want to have people to know about these two. I'm passing out to everybody. Passport around this way and that way. These are, I don't do the computer things, so they're with me, so I have to try to do this here.
You understand that your five minutes are, you're going right?
Yes. I'm gonna give you this thing. Very rough draft. You guys can pass it on to the other ones. I ran out of ink. So here's your time. Do you want me to? Okay, thank you. Okay. Basically, my name is Denise Protasey, and I have an idea. I'd like to have a drone event. We'll call it BiSTEM. We just started a committee, and we need this for our community because the kids are getting left behind. And we are able to use the park up at the Veteran Memorial and the Baton Park for this two-day event. I want to have vendors in the daytime. I'd like to have maker spaces for kids to learn how to make drones, fly them the next day. Hopefully have a show at nighttime with drones to give it to everybody. I'd like to be this as big as a boom fest, and it's a dream come true that can make happen. And I just need to get everybody's involvement on it so we can make it happen for these kids here, because they need all the help they can get. They see the kids on the newspaper and the news saying that they have drone races up there, and I'm sure these kids would love to have that down here. And basically, that's pretty much about it. I'm just asking for support from people and everybody for doing this. I've got cloudbusters involved, hopefully. RC Barry, hopefully, he's a radio control person. Ken Lander gave me his information. Raul gives me a bunch of information, so I'm gonna fly with it and see where we can go. So.
Dates, September twentieth or this?
Oh, the dates are September twentieth and twenty-first. So we will be hopefully having that event going on and learning kids how to do all this sort of stuff, and I'd like to be part of the STEM program. Try getting ahold of people, not able to get ahold of people, I cannot ask no questions. So basically, this is where we're standing at right now. And I'd like to get the support of everybody that we can, from the four states around us, because they all have drones for their adventures that they have to do with the services for taking care of us. And for two days a year, I'd like to have all those people that take care of us to come out and be a little kid and fly your drones with other people. That's all I can say right now, because I've never done this before. My husband and I were the caretakers of the Veterans Memorial. I pull weeds, I don't do anything else. But last year, we had the Walk of the Heroes up there for the first time. And I got to talk with Jake, he's one of the student veterans up there, and he said, let's go ahead and do it. Raul helped me out in going which way to go about doing this. I got a committee started the last Friday of every month at three o'clock at Silver, Santa Clara City Hall. Now, we're debating on the time because some people can't make it at three o'clock, so we're trying to figure out what time we want to make it at. But we would really love to have your support on this here because it's very much needed. And we are able to use the park up there, because it's an open field, they've got cloudbusters that flies their planes on Tuesdays. And I just need the support of everybody. I know we can make it happen one way or another. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to come before you, and I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge one of my staff members and congratulate this individual who is retiring from the sheriff's office. If I could have Armando Medina, please come up. I have known Mondo for many years before he joined law enforcement. I had the honor and privilege to get to work with Mondo for the majority of his law enforcement career. I want to wish him the best in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Mondo. I know that you are gonna go do other things. I know you're a family-oriented person that gets involved with the community, likes to be involved with schools, the children, coaching, and I see that in your future, but I just want to wish you the best. We do have a little token that I, we put together for you from the sheriff's office, and it says it's a certificate of retirement presented to Armando Medina on this ninth day of April twenty twenty-five for your dedicated years of service to the citizens of Grant County. This wishes on your retirement from the Grant County Sheriff's Office. So I want to present that to you. And that's not the only thing that we have. I do have another token that we put together for you that we would like to present to What we did is we, what I did is I got, we got him a shadow box with our badge and his insignia of his duties that he had here with the sheriff's office, and I'd like to present that to him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for allowing me to do this for this individual. He's well-deserved.
Yeah. I can't find it. So next item on the agenda.
If I may, I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
It's an honor, you know, coming from Raul number one.
And Raul number two. And we do have a few jokes and so on, but once again, congratulations to Joe Medina. I've known him forever, and I do want to thank the sheriff's department because they're there when you need them. I'm gonna tell you that straight up. But what I'd like to bring up is I do want to thank the commission. I've been in this community for many, many years. I was born and raised here, and I've been in the office for the last forty-four years. And I have seen a lot of commissioners, and I just want to thank, and I do have a very wonderful feeling about this commission, and I feel so privileged on working in unison with all the elected officials, the dedicated elected officials. And I want to extend my sincere thanks for the important things that you guys do to keep this wonderful county moving forward. Your commitment, your response, and your leadership, especially at the trying times that we are right now. And I do want to thank Charlene also, because she has been really working very well with us in so many different ways. As deeply appreciated, thank you for the guidance, thank you for the times and the collaborations. And whenever you do answer that call, whenever I ask, it is very, very, I really feel very comfortable about the things that I say to you guys and how we can actually keep Grant County and this beautiful community together. And I'd like to acknowledge our senator, Gabe Ramos, back there, so I do acknowledge and I do thank him also, because we do communicate in very wonderful ways of doing it, and that's what this county is all about. However, not only that, about the county, I just want to give a special birthday wish to Thomas Shaly, and I do want to wish him a very, very happy birthday. I cherish all the good times that I've had with him back since grade school. I know he's a little bit younger than I am, but we don't want to go down that road. But I am grateful on keeping all the lines and communications open with you guys, but I just want to say thank you, Thomas Shaly, for everything you've done, and you've known my family, we've known your family, the respect that I have for your family, and not only how we grew up, not only in the church, but as individuals. Once again, I do thank the county commission and the conversations, and once again, hopefully that we can move this wonderful county together and work together, not only with our legislatures, but also with all our elected officials. And I just wanted to express my thanks to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Seeing none. Moving on to the next item of the agenda. We have, we're going to a public hearing for open public hearing and discussion to determine if firework restrictions should be imposed within unincorporated portions of Grant County due to the extreme and severe drought conditions. So if I can have a motion to go into a public hearing? So have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shaly. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now we're in a, in an open public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to testify? Anybody wanting to testify? No? Okay, thank you. If I can have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion closed.
Second. So have a motion by Commissioner Flores to close the hearing, and a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Hearing is closed. Moving on to proclamation under item B, consideration of proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions in Grant County, impose imposition of a firework restriction. Like to make a motion to approve proclamation. So have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, consideration of proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week?
I move to approve.
Second. So have a motion to approve. I have a second. Do we have any discussion? Get her to read it now, right? Can you read it, Amy, please?
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection and preservation of life and property. And whereas, the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Grant County Regional Dispatch Authority. And whereas, Grant County Regional Dispatch Authority, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, Grant County Regional Dispatch Authority, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas, have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their career this past year. Now, therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April fourteenth through nineteenth of twenty twenty-five as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And we'll get that up to them, right? Thank you. Moving on to consideration of proclamation for Housing Month?
I second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Stevens. Can we get that one read, please?
Whereas fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans. And whereas, the principle of fair and equal housing is not only a national law and policy, but a fundamental human entitlement. And whereas, people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status. And whereas, the Grant County Board of County Commissioners, the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, and the Silver Regional Association of Realtors will supply fair housing information to the public, and the county will display a fair housing proclamation at the Grant County Administration Building. And whereas, the Grant County Board of Commissioners, the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, and the Silver City Regional Association of Realtors is committed to highlighting the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Fair Housing Law Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help ensure every American of their right to fair housing. And whereas, the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all Realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now, therefore, the Grant County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Do we have Ms. Viegas here?
Yes.
Yes, you want to come up and, so we can present you proclamation, please? Come on, guys. for the CDT Trail Days, tenth celebration. Is that yours, Mr. Tugget? Go ahead and read it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Whereas, the Continental Divide National Scenic Trail stretches three thousand one hundred miles along the backbone of America and Mexico to Canada and provide access to some of the dramatic and wild landscape left in this planet. And whereas, the Continental Divide Trail event has become a celebration, this incredible trail and the people who support it hikes and maintains it, fostering the community engagement, outdoor recreation, environmental stewardship. And whereas, the tenth annual Continental Divide will be held at twenty twenty-five, marking the significant milestone of the event of future highlights of the import of Grant County role, preservations, promotions, and enjoying the Continental Divide Trail. And whereas, the event brings together hikers, trail enthusiasts, local residents, celebrating stories, conversations, efforts, outdoor recreations, opportunities, contribution to tourism, education, and the local economy. And whereas, the success of the CDT and the CDT Trail Days is made possible of the tireless efforts of volunteers, trail organization, local business, and government agencies who work in partnership to ensure the trail is accessible, protected to generations to come. Whereas, the Grant County, New Mexico, takes pride of this natural beauty in its role in preserving the Continental Divide as the essential outdoor resource for both present and future generations. Therefore, it is resolved that the Grant County Board of Commission hereby proclaim Continental Divide Trail Days tenth year anniversary.
Commissioners, do I have a motion? Have a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Shaly. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything you'd like to say real quick?
Matter of fact, I'll say it real quick. Thank you. Matter of fact, it's gonna be on the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth of April. And if you do skip on the website with Continental Divide, it's gonna have a lot of breakdowns of what's going on. We're gonna actually start the kickoff on Thursday, it's gonna be at the Toad, and then there's gonna be a lot of speakers and so on on Friday, and then the big, the big event's gonna be at Golf Park, it's starting from nine o'clock to four P.M. And matter of fact, we're gonna have a special singer by the name of Kiana Huerta, she's gonna be singing, and there's gonna be vendors, food, and please join us. And then the community hikes will be on Sunday, so please join us. It is a wonderful event. I just had Teresa Martinez, the executive director for the Continental Divide, on the radio show this morning, even though I couldn't be there. But I do want to thank her, because when I started with her on this wonderful event ten years ago, we actually started there at the Big Ditch with our event, and we had about, close to about a hundred, maybe a hundred people showing up. It has become such a wonderful, wonderful event, and please enjoy and get to meet all these hikers from all over the world. It's a wonderful event, and not only that, maybe, Chairman, you can do that thirty-one hundred miles one these days, okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, one of these days. Thank you. Moving on to next item on the agenda is going to be presentations for twenty twenty-five legislative update from our New Mexico State Representative Luis de Asas and New Mexico State Senator Gabriel Ramos.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, elected and sheriff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and give you an update of what we were able to accomplish, stop, fight. to accomplish, stop, fight, pass. I mean, that's just all part of the equation. I sit on Veterans Labor Committee, on the Veterans Labor Committee, and I sit on tax. And it's one of the nice things that both the Senator and I sit on tax, we're able to communicate on issues and bills that are going back and forth to each other's committees. So it gives us a little bit of an advantage to see what's coming either way. We had a three, over a three billion dollar budget surplus this last session. And every session is a little bit different, okay? Every single one of them that I've been on, they're always a little bit different. They have their own personality. And depending on who gets elected, who retires or whatever. And this one, we had three billion dollars, and it went, they went through that money pretty quick. And I say they because we don't all, we don't all participate on building the budget. We all try to pass bills to support certain things, but the budget is handled through different committees and different people. But at the end, we still had to, even though we had three billion dollars, we had to get into our reserves to support a tax cut for individuals, which was a little concerning to have three billion dollars. And we're looking to see where we can find seventy million dollars. The, there were no grow funds this year, which was a big hit to our, to our area. I mean, last year I had half a million dollars of grow funds to just myself out of my office and to, you know, invest in our community. We did not get that. So none of the senators or representatives got, had grow funds this year. And for those that don't understand the difference from capital outlay and grow funds, capital outlay is more capital projects like bricks, motor vehicles, that kind of equipment, that kind of stuff. That's one checkbook, and that's how we can use that checkbook. The other checkbook, grow funds, or you knew it as junior, junior funds, those dollars could be spent with less discretion. And I can even use those for operations. So to, you know, help the university hire a professor or to do something like we're doing for SAS, which is, I put twenty million, twenty thousand dollars to, for SAS to have a regional human trafficking conference that's going to happen April twenty-third through the twenty-fifth here, our own Grant County Veterans and Memorial Conference Center, this, this, here coming around the corner. So, you know, it's those good things that we're able to do with that particular type of funding. We can also help places like I, like we did last year, or I did last year with El Refugio, fifty thousand dollars. We're able to help food services. We're able to help a lot of things, a lot of the needs outside of capital outlay. And I think that's a big thing. It was a big loss, in my opinion, for Grant County and for the state. As far as, and I'm going to, because I know the Senator's going to want to talk, we don't want to go over both the same things. But there were bills, I'm going to talk about some of the bills that, that I worked on. I think the biggest accomplishment was able to pass HB forty-seven, which was property taxes exemptions for veterans and their spouses. And so those were expanded, and we were able to sign that and get HB one sixty-one, which extended Veterans Day passes and park, and park passes for all veterans to get in for free. We, I worked on about fifty different pieces of legislation that I sponsored or co-sponsored. But we hit, I hit, I tried to hit the things that people really, really are concerned with, like healthcare, where we're trying to get higher reimbursements for doctors in our rural community. And at the end of the day, it is a, there's a big difference. I think the debate that we have up in Santa Fe is not so much Democrat and Republican, but more urban versus rural areas. So they have more infrastructure, they have more doctors, have more amenities, so doctors and other, other businesses thrive more in, in, in urban areas, whereas we in, in the, in the rural areas struggle a little bit more to attract doctors and, and other commerce. And so I was trying to get some, some credits for our doctors. There were also, I worked on a big deal here in Grant County because I, we had a big, I don't know, call it a conference last year concerning fire prevention, right? Wildfire prevention. You sure don't want to be in the same situation where Ruidoso was or Las Vegas. And so I worked on, on a bill, three fifteen, and I was just confirming, just to make sure, and I'm just waiting for a confirmation, to make sure that that funding still remained in there. There was a lot of things that we put in there and sometimes doesn't make it all the way through. And so, and then the governor hasn't signed everything. So we're, we're still waiting to see what happens. But anyway, HB three fifteen was to focus on arc surveys, archaeological surveys, which are a prerequisite to do thinning projects and fire buffer zones and stuff like that. And so because we have the lack of enough arcs, studies, and, and those people, archaeologists in the state of New Mexico that are already busy because of the black fire and because of the other fires, the Hermit speak, and so far, so, so forth, they don't have enough boots on the ground to make all those, you know, those archaeological surveys. That being said, this bill would have allowed, I'm going to kind of simplify it, kind of like apprentices to go in and be trained, go through a school, any, most any university, this was targeted toward New Mexico State University because it's close to us, that has the potential to have that, those studies done and give those credentials and be able to start serving so we can create our own defensive fire, defensive fire zones, right? And protect our, our residents. The other thing, we worked a little bit on HB one oh four, which was supporting law enforcement for a number of crimes that are committed against police officers and, and to support law enforcement in that manner. And then on higher education, that's something that was a big, big hot button topic in, in Grant County. I had to put a memorial out there like I did last year about, before all this happened, I had already put a memorial that we should have a study on, and on responsible spending by higher educational institutions and to, you know, give us reports and so forth concerning that, but not specifically just for one university, but all higher education, okay? And as far as capital outlay, I, I, you know, there were a lot of projects. Again, I want the Senator to, want to give him something to talk about. As far as the hospital, we were able to get seven hundred thousand dollars for a new CT scanner that was very badly needed. They've been asking for that for a long time. And then we had, we got, we had two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, for the airport to resurface the parking lot there or to surface it because I don't think all of it's done, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate the Grant County Detention Center. Other projects that I think would, would benefit us were some sixty thousand dollars for Fort Baird, uh, equipment for, excuse me, improvements for Fort Baird and accessibility. And then, try to leave you, leave you something, Senator, and, and a few other things. I don't, again, I don't want to take all the air in the room, heat yourself, a lot of things that we were able to do. Overall, we were able to bring a little over four million dollars for just Grant County alone, which is really a great accomplishment. Again, I, I wish we would have had those dollars for those junior dollars or, as you know them as girlfriend money, because it really, I would have been able to help our community a lot more. There's just so much need, so much need. And, and unfortunately, when we go through the prospectors meeting and we all come together to see the needs of our, our community, our, our county, it sometimes comes out to about a hundred million dollars, and we've got about two dollars, well, two dollars for every hundred, or a couple million dollars for every hundred million dollars is really what we have to work with, right? We have a hundred million dollars and asked between all of us, if you think about it, we were able to be five million dollars out of a hundred million dollars. So it's something, it is an accomplishment, but we always want to bring you more. Last thing I'm going to say is, I think what's important is because there were twelve hundred bills between the House and the Senate, we rely on our communities, our commissioners, our council people, our, our law enforcement, whatever department you're in or whatever you're doing, to reach out to us and let us know if there's a bill that's going to affect you. If it's for ranching, if it's for mining, whatever, right? Environmental, because we can't read twelve hundred bills, and then they're, not only that, they're being sometimes amended or they're being substituted. So if there's ever any sort of bills that are going to affect you, or you feel that you need to express something for, whether it's capital outlay or whatever, any changes up to the last point, so important for you to reach out to us, let us know so, because we are here willing to help and we want to help. But, you know, it's, it's hard for us to know everything in twelve hundred bills. So thank you very much for the time that we had. I hope I gave the Senator a little bit of room to talk. God bless you.
Thank you, Representative Senator Ramos.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me today. I guess I'm done. Took all our time. But, no, I, I also want to, you know, tell everyone, thank you very much for participating in the legislative process. It was really nice to be able to call Charlene sometimes at eleven o'clock at night and ask her a question because a bill was coming in front of us that was going to affect our counties. So thank you, Charlene. Raoul, you reached out a lot also on some of the tax bills. Raoul, both Raules, Raoul Villanueva also on some of the Sheriff's Office bills, and I really do appreciate you all. Commissioners, also thank you for visiting us and going over some of the important issues that were important to, to Grant County. Tom, thank you for helping, helping us out with some of the, the water issues. I know that's one of your specialties, so thank you for, for reaching out and helping us out. I, I really do appreciate that. Connie, thank you for reaching out on, on the Clark bills and election bills. You know, it was, it was really a, a great experience, you know, being that I've participated on both sides of the aisle. You know, going into this legislative session, I was really, I'm not going to lie to you, I was really wondering how it was going to be receptive. And it was great. You know, the, the floor leader on the majority side reached out to me plenty of times, and we, we worked really well together when it came to insurance bills. He'd reach out to me when it came to election bills. And, you know, we were in the forefront of a lot of issues, and that was, that was great to me because that's why I got elected, and that's why I wanted to represent you all because I wanted to try and use my expertise, and it went really well. So, you know, every year up in the state legislature, there's always anti-mining bills, there's always anti-oil and gas bills, and it surprises the heck out of me because fifty percent of our state budget comes out of oil and gas, and a good percent comes out of mining. And, you know, it surprises me because we, we literally have the cleanest oil in the United States. So when you have the cleanest oil in the United States, you have the cleanest oil in the world. So by shutting down oil and gas here in the state of New Mexico, we'd be literally pushing our business over, overseas. And by doing that, we'd be using some of the dirtiest methods to create oil and gas. And that is something that we've got to avoid. We need to keep our oil and gas industry alive. We need to help our mining industry here in the state of New Mexico to, to make sure that we keep all our local jobs and our local monies coming into southwest New Mexico and the whole state. You know, we could disagree in a lot of, lot of areas, but that is one area we need to really come together on and do everything we can to help mining oil and gas because they are the lifeline of the state of New Mexico. You know, being the cleanest, I know that when it comes to mining, we have the most stringent copper rules in the nation also. So that just means that we're producing copper to the cleanest levels in, in the, in the United States. Therefore, again, we're creating the cleanest levels in the, in the world by, by the most stringent copper rules that we have here in the state of New Mexico. So, you know, those are some of the issues that I was really surprised to see as I served in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, and to have to go back and revisit some of these same anti-oil and gas bills and anti-mining bills over and over again. You know, it's time we put those arrests and start concentrating on how to create new jobs and create new, new industry to, to the state of New Mexico. I serve on tax, business and transportation, and Luisa's right, you know, sometimes he gets a better bill before I do, and sometimes I get a better bill before he does, and we work really well together to try and, and cut back on taxes and make sure that new taxes don't go through. This year, we had a great tax, tax package. You know, we call it a tax package, but literally no one got taxed on it. We decided go ahead and utilize monies from within our budgets to make sure that with, with the big surplus the way we had this year, made sure that that tax wasn't passed on to the local, the, the local people. You know, when it comes to, to bills that I presented, you know, it, it was an honor to present some of these bills. We helped out with Senate Bill Three, the Mental Health Behavior Health Reform, which bringing one billion dollars to the state of New Mexico to fight mental health issues. And also was able to, to support Senate Bill Two Twenty-One, which, you know, it's an insurance bill, so they counted me on this. And that was unfair insurance claims practices. Unfortunately, there was a lot of unfair practices going on in, in Ruidoso. So we came together and put together a bill to where we make, we make sure that insurance companies are accountable. You know, sometimes I have to go against the grain. I'm an insurance agent. And sometimes I have to go against my own companies, but it's the right thing to do for our people in the state of New Mexico. And believe me, they let me know about it. We also, also worked on the Senate Bill Eighty-One, New Mexico Fair Plan. And what that, what that did was it raised our caps to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ensure people that cannot get insurance in, in certain areas and certain zones. For instance, in, in Mibres and Pino Salto, it's hard for people to get insurance because they live in a bad fire zone, so insurance companies are not giving them insurance. So we're going to supply insurance for them to the state of New Mexico. We also, also supported one of my bills that did get signed by the Governor, Governor, Senate Bill Nineteen, and that's the Board of Regents' requirements. And what we're doing is requiring them to take ten hours of, of, of education courses, which would require them to, to take courses, take a course in ethics, take a course in budgeting, and take a course in Robert's Rules of Order. We also sponsored Senate Bill Two Twenty, which was a transparency bill portal that you, that you actually get, all the risk management claims are going to be put into a portal now. Every, every single risk, risk management claim from schools to counties to state, any type of entity that, that uses state risk management, so that everyone can know what kind of monies are being paid out when it comes to lawsuits. You know, one of the, the biggest things for me is, is always have transparency and always trying to do everything we can to, to help out different situations. And this year's situation was W N M U. And I don't know, for some odd reason, our governor did not want to appoint our Board of Regents. And we waited literally to the last couple weeks to get this done. And it was only because I was able to stand up on the Senate floor and call her out and let her know we needed some Board of Regents to continue running this great university that we have called W N M U, in case she didn't know where it was at. It's in southwest New Mexico. And we stood up and let her know that we needed Board of Regents so we could continue to move forward and we can hire a new president and start the, the search for, for our new president. It's time that we all come together as a university and just move forward and stop all the rhetoric and make sure that that university comes back and comes back stronger than ever. And that's what I'm expecting from all of us as a leader, and you all being leaders, we all literally have to come together and make sure that that happens because that is a vital institution to the state of New Mexico, and it's a vital institution to southwest New Mexico. At any time, my number is five seven five three one three two zero seven seven. Anyone can call me. My number's printed everywhere. Please call me if you have any concerns. I also wanted to announce that I have Brett Caston that I hired as my aide, and he should be starting on the thirteenth of April. And I'm excited to have him on my team because we served very well together when he was the chairman and I was the vice chairman for eight years. And I'm really looking forward to having him. And again, you can reach out to me. And again, you can reach out to me or Brett Caston after April thirteenth. So God bless you all. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for making this an easy job for us because the participation that you all put forward was awesome and thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to, uh, next item on the agenda is going to, uh, be Hila Regional Medical Center report. Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Um, uh, for the month of, uh, well, here to date on, on discharges, we, we're still, uh, trending right about where we were last year for both, uh, discharges and deliveries. Um, our swing bed days are, are significantly over last year and, and that's where we're kind of ramping up that program and, uh, these are patients that need a little bit longer term, kind of like a skilled nursing, uh, type care and, uh, having that. Um, uh, ER visits, uh, continue to, to trend higher. We, we are seeing more and more people, uh, come to our emergency room and, and, and visit the facility through that way. And as well as with outpatient visits, uh, people utilizing the facility for our services on an outpatient basis continue to, uh, to increase. When, when we look at patient encounters, um, uh, this is, uh, patients that come, uh, that we interact with at some point, whether clinics or admissions or emergency room or surgeries or in some way, uh, we're on track to be over, uh, ninety thousand patient encounters this fiscal year, which is, uh, a, a big jump, uh, where we were previously. Um, clinic visits and our cancer center, uh, again, um, along with everything else, uh, are being utilized very well. We're seeing increases, uh, in people utilizing those services. Uh, for the month of, uh, February, we reported, uh, eight and a half million dollar operating revenue and, uh, eight, eight point four million dollars in operating expenses, uh, with, uh, total surplus, uh, for the month of February being three hundred and forty-five thousand and year to date about two point seven million. And again, these numbers are exclusive of, uh, kind of, uh, the, the notes that I include there, exclusive of H D A A dollars and S B, uh, one sixty-one dollars. On, on those two particular items, um, uh, to date, uh, we've received about two point four million dollars in S B one sixty-one dollars and, and that was, uh, five point seven million to be reimbursed to us for our costs and we submit an invoice to the state, uh, quarterly on that. So about two point four million that we've received of that so far. Um, on the H D A A dollars, we've, uh, we've received a little over six million dollars of that in, in cash, um, so far, uh, with that. And, um, and, and what we report out is, is, uh, again, this is GAAP accounting, so we report, we report out what we accrue and, and accrue that for, so, uh, but that's how much cash we've received from those two programs, uh, thus far to date. Um, just on, on a couple of projects, um, our MRI and, and OR, HVAC, those, those continue. It's just, uh, it's just time when you're working with, uh, federal projects, uh, to do that. Um, I do have a signed, uh, uh, agreement with an architect to, uh, redo outpatient registration area and our ER kind of registration area, so that's, that'll get underway. Um, uh, we did receive, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars in, in state capital outlay this last, uh, session. Um, and I'm grateful to, uh, Senators Ramos and Brantley, uh, as well as Representative Trazas for contributing to, to those funds. Uh, this will go to the replacement of our C T, uh, scanner. Um, just want to report out that, uh, quite a few big projects that, uh, were just, just kind of lingering out there. One of my goals is, objectives is to, if we get dollars to do, to do items, if, what we do and we get them complete and we kind of move on. So we're happy to report that the telephone system project is done, the telemetry system project is done and the nurse call system that we had grant funds for is, we're kind of halfway through that one and we should be finished up and wrapped up by, by June on that. Uh, just, uh, s- some update, uh, that, um, that our board has, uh, elected to, to sign a, an agreement with a company called Ovation Healthcare to help provide, uh, management and consulting services to, to the facility and to the board and to, uh, management staff. Dr. Lamore, general surgeon, started in March and, and he's, uh, um, uh, his clinic is, is picking up and we're happy to have him, um, on board. And, and for our rewards and recognition, uh, for our staff and, and we're always looking for, uh, ways to, to do things better, to, to recognize our, our staff and what they do. We, we held our first ever, um, annual Service Star of the Year celebration. So, uh, every month we, we select, uh, two clinical employees and two support, uh, staff employees as, uh, monthly, uh, kind of Service Stars. And then, uh, what we did is we implemented, uh, an annual one, so we picked one person from, from each of those categories from, from the year and, and they are our Service Star of the Year, uh, employees. And, uh, we had a great celebration, good turnout and it was, uh, it was a lot of fun. We do have, uh, so we are accredited by, uh, the Joint Commission, uh, which is, uh, a company that CMS allows to come and inspect and survey and look at our hospital and make sure we're complying with all the rules, uh, uh, federal and state rules. Uh, we have a mock survey coming up next week that they go through and, uh, they basically do like an accreditation type survey. Um, and then, uh, we work off of that, we make improvements in preparation for, uh, the Joint Commission. We expect, uh, the Joint Commission, our accredited organization to, uh, to be here next year in twenty twenty-six is when we'll have our, uh, survey with them. Uh, just want to report out that, uh, we continue to, uh, to do a lot with our EMS staff, uh, as first responders, uh, these guys, uh, work hard and, and are so important to our community and, and what they do and, and who they reach and, and helping them, uh, with their skills, uh, is important to us and, and we've gone through and we've done a, a lot of, uh, critical care training and, uh, helping them with, um, as I mentioned, that first response to, to people who need help and, uh, which included, uh, a cadaver lab and, and having, uh, hands-on with understanding, uh, all the physiological stuff that, uh, happens with patients in different types of situations. We, we are a sponsor of the Tour of the Hila, of the Green Jersey, happy to do that and happy to be a part of, of that, uh, event. Um, and, and we, we provide a, a ton of su- support for that. We, uh, with EMS services, um, uh, dollars and, and contributions and supplies and just a, a variety of other things that we help with that, that group. And just want to, uh, announce that, uh, we have Hospital Week coming up and it's a, a big week for us and we take a lot of time to, to celebrate and, and recognize staff and do a lot of fun things together and that comes up on, on May eleventh through the seventeenth. Uh, Commissioners, that's my report.
Thank you, sir.
That's all.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on to, uh, next item of the agenda, the, uh, elected official, uh, reports. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have a report? And going on to Chairman, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Chairman Poncet and Commissioners. Attached before I use the report title, Tax Maintenance Report, the total amount of taxes collected for the month of March was three hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents. So far for the twenty twenty-four tax rule, nine million, eight hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fourteen cents has been collected, which left the county at a collection percentage of sixty-seven point fifty-two percent. For the total twenty twenty-four tax rule, four million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and thirty cents remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the total ten-year collection as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five is ninety-two point eight-three percent, of which a total of a hundred and seventeen million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and one cent of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of property taxes of nine million, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and one cent. Now going on with the status of the Treasurer's Office, today starts the second half collection, um, season for the twenty twenty-four second half of property taxes. Property owners have until May tenth to pay the second half before penalty and interest is charged. Since May tenth falls on a Saturday, I'm giving property tax owners until Monday, May twelfth, to come in and make those payments. Um, if anyone has any questions regarding their second half installment, please contact the Treasurer's Office. Payments can be made in the Treasurer's Office or dropped off outside the, uh, dropbox outside the Grant County Administration Center or dropbox in front of the Treasurer's Office. Payments can be done online at W W W dot Grant County N M dot gov or by calling the Treasurer's Office to give a payment over the telephone for additional charge. We sent out three hundred and seventy-five delinquent postcards, which were mailed out to property owners that were delinquent for tax years twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. I urge property tax owners to take this seriously and to contact the Treasurer's Office before June thirtieth, failure to pay at least the twenty twenty-two property taxes, um, they will be submitted to the Property Tax Division and will be charged a, um, an added a hundred and twenty-five dollar cost of state fee from the Property Tax Division. Once these property tax accounts are submitted to the state for auction, the county forfeits all accruing penalty and interest. Yet alone for March twenty twenty-five, the county benefited in revenue of six thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-six cents and penalty and interest collection. Um, the Property Tax Division is currently working onsite here at the county and working on the auction list for this upcoming fall. Um, I will keep the Commission updated on specific, um, dates, time and, uh, number of property tax accounts that will be put on that auction list. Um, I also want to express my deepest emphases to the family of Rowena Tate, who selfishly committed twenty-three years of her life to the Treasurer's Office from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and seven. Um, she served distinction under Treasurer Benavides, Treasurer Madrid and Treasurer Siro. I also want to extend a happy birthday to Commissioner Shally, happy birthday, Commissioner, Commissioner. Um, and I really like, um, I just want to point out what Assessor, Chief Deputy Asses, uh, Turieta said. And working in commodity with the elected officials and department heads at the county has been, uh, Commissioner Fores phenomenally awesome. Um, I, I, the presence of the Commission, you know, reaching out to me, asking questions, coming into the office, I didn't see that the first term of my, of being Treasurer, but seeing you guys and having that presence there means a lot and to my staff, so thank you. Um, also, you know, working this, this come around with the elected officials, um, with, with Connie, Hogen, our clerk and Miss D and, and Raoul's been awesome. Um, also with the Grant County Manager's Office, you know, my continuing, um, efforts and working with Charlene has been awesome since the beginning of my, of my first term. And Andrea, thank you for, for answering and, and being there for everything, so thank you for that. Um, I also want to thank my safety committee. Um, we just keep going, um, our, our meetings are growing and I'm liking to see that all departments are starting to participate in the safety committee. It is very important that we have that here, um, at the county and, um, and, and every day I just think of how I can get that improved as I'm also the chair for that specific committee on, on what we can do to promote safety for the county. Um, again, lastly, I want to thank my staff for all their hard work, um, especially for this upcoming second half season and I stand to any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for the report, um, and your comments. I just had a couple of questions. I was looking over the, uh, tax schedule maintenance report you provided and it looks like in the twenty twenty-four row, um, the percentage collected is sixty-seven point five-two percent and I, um, just want to confirm that after May, we expect, do you expect that will be closer to the, uh, ninety-six percent from prior years?
Chairman Poncet, Commissioner Stevens, great question. Um, it, it's always a wish, what's going to happen. Um, I'm, I'm always hoping for a higher collection, um, and I will report that to you. I'm hoping that we have a higher collection rate as, as ever because it seems like we constantly stay busy and we're constantly posting payments and, and reaching out to, um, delinquent property tax owners. Um, I'm, I'm hoping to report to you next month, at least to see what, um, what the final product is of that. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping I have a ninety-six percent, that would be great, but, um, optimistically, that would be wonderful, but, um, I can report that to see what the final product will be and we can go from there. Normally, um, collection rates improve in June when we send out the final collection notices.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then, um, the last question was the column where it says total taxes collected this month, they're pretty small amounts and then it goes, it bumps up in twenty twenty-three. Um, and because those are years, i- is that just like, wh- what is that column?
So that column is just reporting the amount of taxes we collected for that, uh, specific, um, tax year on the tax rule. For that specific year.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you answering those questions.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. Any other question, Commissioner Medina?
Mr. Khan, a few years ago, we had discussed, uh, one of the previous meetings about investments, about investment opportunities that you have working with different, how are those producing? Have you got an update on those or anything like that?
Uh, yes, um, Chairman Poncet, Commissioner Medina, thank you. That was a great question. Um, right now, um, we do have a great portfolio, um, investment portfolio with the county. Um, I will be having an investment committee, advisory committee, um, next month. I'm just waiting for all the reports to come in from, from two of my investment brokers that I utilize. Um, and I will be fixing that to have a, a, a small little, uh, portion of my, um, in my elected official report next month.
Okay.
To report to you guys, uh, on the, on the investments.
Just, just a quick, one more follow-up.
Sure.
You mentioned two investors? You're using two investments?
So we, we current, we, I currently have two investment brokers, uh, more in financial and Stifel Financial.
Okay.
Um, I was using Mesro Financial, but I ended up just, um, things weren't really working out with that investment broker, so I did, um, uh, sell those investments to, to Stifel Fin- Financial, so we just have two investment brokers at this time.
Perfect, sir. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it. I just, I hadn't heard nothing on it, I just wanted to.
Yes, I'll start the, I'll start getting you, um, updated, um, reports on those after our advisory investment committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sheriff Villanueva.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. For my monthly report of the month of March, Sheriff's Office responded to one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven calls for service, of which are combined with dispatched and self-initiated calls. Some of the calls that we responded to, we had thirty-nine alarm calls, we investigated seventy domestic disturbances, we investigated thirty-five, uh, crashes in the county. Uh, we also had our animal control responded to seventy-two calls for service. Uh, we had twenty-seven reckless driver calls, fifteen unwanted subject calls, sixty-six suspicious activity calls. Um, and then, in regards to my Civil Process Division, they served three hundred and ninety-one papers. They did ten round trip transports to different, uh, jails and prisons for a total of seven thousand ninety miles in the month of March. Uh, in our District Court Security, uh, in the District Court, they had, uh, thirty, twenty-five in-person hearings, they had ten criminal dockets in person, the detention center transported sixty-seven inmates to the District Court and court security screened eight hundred and eighty-two of the general public. I wanted to go over a little bit about our training. Um, I have eight of my staff members that are going to be attending the sexual, the Silver Regional Human Trafficking Conference on April twenty-second through the twenty-fourth here in Silver City. Um, I'm attending. Um, attendees will learn how to identify, respond, and help victims of human or sex trafficking. I believe that that's going to be a great conference and training that they're going to go through, because that, we're seeing that a lot. Also, I do have a couple of staff men, one staff member that's going to be attending advanced peer support training. Uh, this training will provide a more in-depth look at peer support as provided to the Grant County Sheriff's Office by any training. I also have another two that are attending just peer support training. Which is CIT training, which is crisis intervention training. Um, that class helps with the basic verbal de-escalation skills. They will gain, gain knowledge regarding crisis and low, low people response on be, or behave in escalating skills. Um, that's a, that training is something that my, I have a, a passion for, that I want to try and get all my staff through, to attend. Uh, because we are dealing with a lot of crisis stuff, um, and with the deputies, having that knowledge and training, it'll help our community better. So, um, my training coordinator is reaching out to see if we can possibly get a, an instructor to just come down to Grant County. So, we can actually have all of uh, Grant County law enforcement attend this. Uh, because we deal with it on a daily basis and uh, if we can get that, um, um, our invitation will be out to all law enforcement in the Southwest To attend, because right now they're traveling to Albuquerque to do this training. And I think if we can get it down here in the southwest corner, it'll be beneficial to our, to my office and the local agencies. I did want to go over a case of interest. On March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, deputies responded to Scott Park Golf Course regarding stolen golf carts. The deputy on scene met with the reporting party who provided video footage showing two individuals entering the park through the parking lot. They used flashlights to search the golf carts before stealing one. One suspect wore light colored jacket and jeans, the other wore dark clothing. Due to poor lighting, the suspects could not be identified. A search of the area and review of nearby security cameras revealed no further evidence. On March thirteenth, deputies responded to thirty-nine oh-three broken arrow regarding the possible location of three stolen golf carts from Scott Park. Upon arrival, two golf, golf carts matching the description were already located by another deputy who was speaking with two subjects on scene. Both subjects admitted they did not own the carts. Inside the carts, personal belongings were found, including a cell phone, clothing items, and a backpack. The backpack contained flashlights and court paperwork belonging to an individual associated with the investigation. The cell phone had a sticker with another individual's name. All items were collected and taken into evidence. Both golf carts had their serial numbers scratched off. A towing service was called to remove the carts. Consent to search the residence was denied, but access to the garage was granted. No additional carts or related evidence were found. Both golf carts were observed running without keys in the ignition. Staff at Scott Park later confirmed that the, that all keys were accounted for. On March twenty-third, a deputy was dispatched to the back of the golf course located on Camino Cerne in Silver City. In reference to a golf cart that had been located. Upon arrival, he made contact with several individuals. One individual stated that while en route to the golf course from his residence, he observed a golf cart abandoned on the roadway. He recognized the golf cart as property of the course and noted it was not where it should have been. He then contacted the course manager and informed him of the situation. The deputy observed the golf cart and confirmed it appeared to belong to the golf course. He then contacted a detective and informed him of the recovery of another golf cart believed to have been taken during the night. He advised a detective that he had taken photographs of the cart and that the owners were present and able to retrieve it. After field interviews and investigations, deputies were able to identify and apprehend one suspect who admitted to taking two of the golf carts. The suspect was charged with aggravated burglary, larceny, and um, Let's see, where to go. Well, he was charged with aggravation and, and stealing of the golf carts. Um, After field interviews, uh, they were able to, okay. The suspect was charged with aggravated larceny and felony possession of a firearm also. The suspect also had two warrants out of the sixth judicial district court for failure to appear on original charges of vehicular homicide. So, during that investigation, they were able to apprehend the suspect. The suspect's name is Charles Rubble. Um, and we still have not been able to identify the second suspect, uh, as, as our first suspect is refusing to cooperate. So, we're actively working that case, but uh, in total, there was five golf carts that were stolen that have all been recovered. We're just trying to uh, identify the second suspect. Another case of interest, um, on March twentieth, deputies were dispatched to the Grant County Detention Center Regarding a possible aggravated battery that had occurred within the facility. Upon arrival, the deputy responding proceeded to the observation room where he made contact with the victim who was receiving treatment from one, From on-scene EMS personnel. He observed a significant amount of blood coming from the right side of the victim's head and a large laceration be- beneath their hair. When asked what happened, the victim uh, provided a statement saying that they were doing rounds, processing out the inmate's medication. Um, they were in the room with several inmates accompanied by another officer. Uh, while they were in the middle of passing out the medicine, uh, she suddenly felt something hit her hard on the head. And remember seeing an inmate holding a broom in their hands. They struck her twice with the broom handle and she was finally able, managed, able to get out of the, the holding cell. Um, the victim was then transported to Gila Regional for treatment. And then um, the suspect was formally charged for two counts of aggravated battery uh, on a healthcare professional. Um, and that inmate is still, uh, I believe incarcerated there at the detention center. So, the staff has been fairly busy, um, dealing with everything that's going on. Uh, we are also going to be uh, participating in the tour of the Gila. The Grant, Grant County Sheriff's Office will be assisting with road closures and ensuring the safety of riders and spectators during the upcoming tour of the Gila Bicycle Race. Deputies will be stationed throughout the county to help manage traffic and maintain a secure environment for participants and the public. Uh, the annual tour of the Gila is a premier cycling event that brings athletes and spectators from around the world to Grant County. With riders navigating challenging routes, law enforcement presence is essential to ensuring a safe and smooth experience for all involved. This event is going to be April twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. Um, in regards to our off-highway grant, the Sheriff's Office will be conducting increased, increased patrols Over the Easter weekend to enforce hot off-highway vehicle regulations in campgrounds and roadways or across the countr, the county. Uh, my last thing, I did want to give a special recognition to Archie, the maintenance janitor that we have, that the county hired. He has been doing an excellent job in my office. From what I see on, on our end, I, I believe he's, he's very thorough And, and very, a very good asset to this county and I'm very pleased that the county hired him. Because he is very receptive and, and takes care of, we have a very clean office because of him. He's doing a very good job. And I just want to thank him for what, what he does day in and day out. And the last thing is I do also want to thank my staff for everything that they do, day in and day out for our community. Um, there's good, there's bad, uh, but they, all in all, are there when they're needed. And I just want to thank them for everything that they continue to do and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Want to congratulate your deputy that's retiring. Congratulations. Know it happened during public input and we can't really say much, but I just want to tell you congratulations. Sorry it wasn't in here. I had to look for some paperwork for this, but uh, congratulations and uh, wishing nothing but the best. And uh, you know, whatever you decide to do next and uh, thank you for your service and time has flown by. Um, been uh, there for you to retire. So, I really want to thank you and thank you, Sheriff, and uh, we appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sheriff, for the report. Um, again, I echo Chairman Ponce's comments about Deputy Medina. I've known Mondo for quite a long time. And in today's world, it's tough to retire from law enforcement. It's quite an accomplishment. Mondo's had a outstanding career. I was privileged to be part of it when he was with the state police and he worked underneath me. I've always looked out for Mondo as far as his uh, his accomplishments and he's done very well for himself, for his family. And I just want to say thank you for your service, Mondo. It's recognized, it's noticed throughout the community. And you're going to be a hard person to replace at the Sheriff's Department. Enjoy your retirement. And I uh, time I'll see you pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, any commissioners? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, under item H, regular meeting, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five meeting, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. With one note, we did have an executive session uh, during that regular meeting and his fire recall correctly, there was no action taken.
I second.
Okay, so I was second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do not excuse me today. It's, I don't know why, but. Anyway, moving on to new business, um, going to uh, item I, consideration of a purchase, purchase Of lift service to install and remove the existing lifts for the fleet department. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So, I was second by Commissioner Shali. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item J, uh, Grant County Detention Center Annual Inspection Report.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item K, approval of asset disposal list?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'm motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shali. Do we have any discussion? So, we caught up, catching up now with all this stuff, so we're good. Good. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving to resolution, consideration of amendment number two to Resolution R dash twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item M, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-four. Um, resolution authorizing submission of application for airport aid to the Federal Aviation Administration. I'll second. I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by myself. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item N, consideration of R dash twenty-five dash twenty-six. Uh, it's also for uh, application for airport aid to the FFA.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, uh, second by Commissioner Shali. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to O, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-seven. Uh, resolution declaring the eligibility and the intent of the county of grant to submit application for Ridge Road To the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
I move to approve.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shali. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item P, consideration of Resolution I dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight, be a budget adjustment request?
Move to approve.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Shali and a second by Commissioner Stevens. Was that right?
Yep.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Stevens, you have a report.
Not today, thank you.
Commissioner Shali.
Just want to reiterate, uh, thank you for our code enforcement group And the actions we see taking place in the communities relating, relating to gent properties. And also, thank you to Sheriff Villanueva. Um, I think we've all observed some deputies in our neighborhoods We haven't seen in a long time, perhaps, and it was very nice to interact with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Flores.
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. I have a few comments. Thank you to Senator Ramos, Representative Terasas, for all the work you did. It's very, very much appreciated, Gabe. And uh, we know it's a tough session up there and hopefully next year we'll get more of that, three billion dollars for Grant County. Uh, just a couple of things, I, I would, uh, Charlene, maybe give me a, another update on the fire department, if those Gregos, see where we're at with that.
Commissioner Flores, um, Chairman and members of the board, I have a meeting scheduled with the Chair of the Homeowners Association next week. Um, they're requesting an MOU to be able to approve the construction. I don't believe that's necessary. I don't believe it's called out in their covenants. Um, I've been working with the fire chief. I'm just going to ask them to please give us authority to move forward. If not, we'll start exploring another location.
Thank you. Also, um, I know Charlene and I have discussed the Cliff Gila Community Center and that's not forgotten. I want those folks to know that. I'm still, still working on that. I know there's a dire need for a place for them to meet, uh, telehealth care, library, and whatever Else that they're in need of, but uh, I, I have not forgot about that. Also, I just want to update the commission on our CLLA, the County Livestock Loss Authority. We received a letter, Charlene and I discussed it. They are happy that we're going to be on board soon, but because of the, the The rules that there has to be an odd number of counties on there. We made it an even number. So, they're trying to solicit another county to get on board. They're trying to make us an ex officio member. If that's the fact, then, then we'll bring it to the commission to appoint a member to be on that, to represent us. But once we're on that, I want the folks to know that, you know, we'll get the, the resources needed to reimburse Ranchers for their losses and education and other resources that they may need to Discuss the wolf issue here in Grant County, because I know that's, that's important to, to the folks that, that have cattle as their business. As you all know, Mr. Shali, Commissioner Shali. Um, and thank you for working on that, Charlene. Uh, another thing, um, that I know it's been brought up to me several, several times. And uh, I really empathize with the folks in Cliff, Gila, Buckhorn, even on the truck bypass road, it's a power outage by PNM. I'm, I'm inconsistent communication with PNM, with Kevin Cardosa. He's giving me updates. And I, I, I'm sort of just a messenger relaying information back and forth. I know, I know folks are losing business out there in Cliff and Gila, the, the restaurants and It, it, power comes on, power goes off. It's been going on for several, uh, I want to say months, if not years. But there definitely is an issue out there and I, I, I want the folks to know that I'm, I'm addressing it. And I think what we need to do at some point in time, because again, I'm just the, the one relaying the information. But I would like to have a sit-down meeting, call it a town hall meeting with PNM, the folks that are being directly affected. And I want it to be a town hall, real town hall meeting where folks are able to ask questions, hard questions, and get real answers. Because i- if it were me being affected that way, I would want answers. And um, I, I think it's long overdue and I think PNM needs to, to answer for why power is inconsistent. I understand the wildlife, the wildfire mitigation plan. I truly understand that because we don't want a fire like California. But there's times that, and maybe I'm speaking out of my element here, but it's not windy and the power goes out. And I, I think, um, at some point in time, you know, even if we, if I, we as a commissioner reach out to the PRC, Have a representative at that town hall meeting, but I want the folks to know that I'm, I'm addressing it. Uh, I'll talk to our senator, our representative, maybe get their assistant. maybe get their assistance, talk to the lieutenant governor. I, I want to really push the issue and get a solution to their problem, because I've always said, I, I don't want to come with just a problem, I want to come with a solution and I think if, this is something that we need all these folks at the table and come up with a viable solution for those people in Cliff and Gila, bypass road. And I know bypass road, my daughter lives on bypass road, she had power outages as well, but that's on my, another, on my front burner there. And I'm also going to follow up with Seapar folks, I know the issues down there with Wind Farm and I told them that I would follow up with them as well, I haven't forgot about them. And lastly, I'm meeting with the Game and Fish Commission, I know Commissioner Shally had met with them, I have a meeting with them tomorrow to address the, the, what's the happening in the Catron County, Commissioner Shally?
Yes, I, I, I should have probably mentioned this in my report, but it's probably known by most people now, but Catron County has suffered an extreme amount of losses of cattle due, most of the wolves are released in that county, even between Arizona and New Mexico. And they've declared a state of emergency.
State of emergency, yes.
Due to the impacts to, not only, not only to ranchers, but public safety, there's been several incidents with wolves regarding the public safety.
Thank you, Commissioner Shally, yeah. So I know that's very close to Grant County, so once I get briefed on it tomorrow, I'll bring it to the commission and we're going to start preparing for that as well, because I know it's, it's going to hit close to home pretty quick. And that's all my comments, thank you, Commissioner, Chairman.
You know, going off on, on one, a couple of your comments, sir, but I'm trying to think of Community Center in Cliff, we had some money a couple of years ago, didn't we, or we didn't get any this year, but a couple of years ago, we had some money to be looking at that, exactly what Commissioner Billings, I believe, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have some state capital outlay dollars for that as well as a congressional direct spending allocation, which is through USDA. So one thing to remember with those C D S allocations, you know, automatically get the money, it's just allocated in the budget, we have to go apply like everyone else. Joseph Hogan is expecting an answer from USDA today in regards to our application, there's been tremendous amount of turnover, I think we're on project number three, they've lost our paperwork, every time someone turns over, we've escalated at the food chain, also involved Melanie Goodman, sort of strongly encouraged from, from the federal level to please move this project forward. So we do need those, we need all of those dollars to be able to complete this project. Joseph and I have also met with the same group that Commissioner Flores has met with and we're, we're doing everything we can to scale that project back to where it's something that the community wants and needs and falls within our budget. It's just not moving very quickly.
And, and that's your district, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So not to step on Commissioner Flores', but I know that, that, you know, when three of our commissioners left, that said, we look at some of their projects. You know, I know that priority should be like Commissioner Flores said, as far as their, their center there, they need a place and I know we've made strides, we, you know, thank everybody for the baseball field over there, the money that has gone into it, the grant, all that, you know, we need to get our, our convention center for them or whatever it's called, the community center. We need to get that going, I'd also like to see that our rodeo arena up there, that we start looking at putting money into that, it's a good place. Not to take away from Southwest Horsemen, that's a great venue, but I think we need to concentrate a little bit more in the Cliff area to help Commissioner Flores, sir. So it'd be good if we could start looking for money or, or start thinking about that for, for the next session, see what we can get for them there. The other question off of what you were saying, if, you know, I understand the wolf problem and I understand what Catron County is going through, but does Rudy Fajardo, if I reach out to him, does he have those stats for Grant County or how do we get the stats for Grant County as to how it's affecting us? I know we have to prepare for the future, but for right now, what do we face with? So if I shoot him an email, who would I get that from?
So that is a U S Fish and Wildlife program. The only involvement that USDA Wildlife Services has is they are the ones that are tasked with determining whether or not it was a wolf depredation versus of mountain lion, bear, coyote. So it's not their program, it's a Fish and Wildlife program. So I've been trying to forward you the public map that shows where the collared wolves are, doesn't tell you obviously where the other ones are. It's my understanding, Commissioner Flores helped me with this, we've had two, two ranchers, I believe, since the C L L A has been in existence that have been paid for depredations.
I believe so, yes.
Oh, but I am not aware, we can, I would suggest that maybe Commissioner Flores or whenever you meet with Fish and Wildlife, they're the ones that have those stats.
And maybe we could get the stats if they have identified? I'm just trying to get our, our commission ready for, for whatever the future means, but sorry about your, go ahead with your.
No, I can ask tomorrow for those stats and I'm meeting with the New Mexico Game Commission and yeah, I'll get those stats, Mr. Chair. And just to give the, the Senator while he's still here heads up, this is the community center, you're right, it is a heartfelt need because there's folks out there that use it for telehealth, there's a special internet connection set up for them and there's not enough room in the current place they have and unfortunately, folks are outside in their car for the confidentiality, getting close to the building to use the internet for telehealth. And I think this goes beyond a want, but it's more of a need and it's just, it's long overdue, they have a historic, I think, World War Two hut out there and I, I think I'm really going to press the, the Senator, the representative to really put this on their front burner for, for looking out next year at this session to get this, get this taken care of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If we can also, I don't know, whatever you decide, what you think, Commissioner, County Manager, to look at it, see what our needs are really in Cliff, so we can start getting ready for our, you know, our capital improvement plan and we can do that, but yeah, I, I need to follow up on that for, for Commissioner Billings also, so thank you. Sorry to get into your comments, sir.
No, no, thank you for that.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes. So being an elected official is an honor, you get to read people's voices and, and do the best you can for everybody, greatest number, greatest good for the greatest number. After Tuesday's meeting, I got multiple phone calls from the Members Valley people. I, I really have appreciated the relationship that they've been giving me, the opportunity to go into their community and talk to them and speak to them and, and they welcome me. Two words that were used quite a bit this, this last couple of days from the people that called me were political and bureaucratic. You know, some comments were made at a meeting up in the Members Valley Senior Center regarding reduction of services, regarding people losing jobs, and those comments were, were probably called to myself and, and Commissioner Flores, I don't know if you got some from your side from the Gila Valley Senior Center as well, but I want people to know and understand that, that senior services are important to us as commissioners and we're not going to let them go away, they're not going to go away. If, if people we contract don't want to do those services and they feel that it's time to let go of them, we're going to find a way to keep those services, the senior centers belong open and they need to be open to serve the community that we take care of. That's why we're their voices, we, we make sure that they're well taken care of. Making people afraid of things is not the best way to do business, that's not the correct way to do business, threatening people's jobs, cutting services, that's not the business we're in, we're in the business to keep services open, that's why we're all up here. We asked some questions about financial obligations that we had, comments were made about emails being sent, we not responded to emails, not true, not true. We, we've got some, some opportunities to work with these senior centers and we are going to keep them open. I, I committed myself to the people that use the Members Senior Center, that I will do everything in my power to keep that place open. I know Commissioner Flores has the Gila Senior Center on his side and I'm sure he's in the same boat. These people use that place as a place to go communicate with other members in their community, they use it as a place to go get a meal and some of those people, those are the only other people they interact with throughout their day, so taking that away from them is the worst thing we could ever consider doing. Commissioner, or Manager Webb, I really strongly suggest, H M S wants a meeting with their board, we really need to get serious about this meeting and get with them and discuss some topics that need to be addressed. This thing of empty threats and we're going to cut and it needs to stop, that's not fair to our community, that's not fair to the citizens we serve and it needs to stop. Senator Ramos, I appreciate you responding back to my phone calls immediately, he's in the same boat when we discussed this issue, he said senior centers are not going to go away, we'll figure out a way to keep them open. On the lighter side, the G R M C Foundation has fundraisers that help the hospital purchase medical equipment, they do, they host events such as concerts and magicians and all kinds of stuff, April fourteenth, they're having an event that, that they're bringing to Western, if anybody has a chance to attend, the money that you spend on that ticket does go to the foundation and helps purchase equipment. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Just on, on my comments here, real quick, you know, I was a little following up on your comments, you know, the comment made that, you know, and I believe in, I'm not sure people can play it back, that we haven't, I guess, done our part with the senior centers. You know, I know that we had our, our County Manager search for emails, she didn't find any to get the invoice, so we can take care of what we need to. Also, you know, from some of the, one of the member audience or however I got it, that, you know, a comment was also made under a breath that, well, send it again, well, I don't think it was sent the first time. And I, I think you're correct with, with, with what you're saying, Commissioner Medina, but you know, our senior centers are very important to our community, you know, health has a lot and I've said it a thousand times up here, you know, when you're talking about health, whether it be mental health, physical health, social aspect of it means a lot to these people too, that keeps them healthy and we need to do that now. I didn't appreciate that we have one of our community leaders let people know to come after the commission because of this and because of that. So I think it is time to, to have that conversation, like you said, and, and I don't think the transparency is there on one side, for us, the transparency is here because we talk in front of you, we let you guys know what, what's happening and I think that with some of the, what I've read and, and some of the comments you made, Commissioner Medina, you know, that this fear mongering, these fear factors to try to get certain people, you know, that's not healthy for them, that's stressful, but I can tell you what, and I can't speak for every commissioner, but from what I'm hearing from our commission, I can tell you that this commission here is for our seniors and we do what we're going to have to do to, to take care of that, whether it's going to a different direction in my opinion or starting to be transparent on some of the stuff that's been happening, that will be what I will do. But that's all I have unless you guys remember or have anything else. Commissioner Stevens?
Just want to say that I think the piano concert is Saturday at seven for the hospital fundraiser, I'm going to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Moving on to next item, be executive session in accordance with N M S A nineteen seventy eight, ten, ten dash fifteen dash one, sub H and two, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
If I move to, move to executive session.
Second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Shally, second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners, are you all aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman Ponce?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Shally?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Mary Alice and we don't have any action. Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee any action, if we do, we'll give you a call. Ben, thank you, Ben.